This meeting is being recorded.
I've got seven PM. I would like to call to order the Sagittuck City Council meeting of November 28th, 2022. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Baldwin.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
Louis.
She's excused.
Muncie.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
Okay, we have quorum. Item four is the consent agenda. Both of these items are roll call items. We have the regular city council meeting minutes of November 14th, 2022. We also have accounts payable in the amount of three fifteen, five sixteen and eighty-nine cents. So that's $315,000, 516 dollars and eighty-nine cents.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion Gardner, second by Stanton. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Baldwin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Louis is excused. Muncie.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
Motion carries. It takes us to item five, staff reports. In your packet, you have reports from the city manager, the treasurer, planning and zoning, department of public works, fire, police, and we also have Lieutenant Ennsfield here. Thank you for coming, Lieutenant, and the engineer. If anything has been entered into these reports that any of the folks that are on any of the boards or commissions thinks is pertinent to the council to hear. Lieutenant Ennsfield, you're welcome. I see Mr. Fox is here. If anybody has anything they would like to add to their reports that is not already in them that you think the council should know about, please feel free to speak up now. Mr. Johnson? Do you want to wait till public comment or Cal Lake? Oh, yeah, please, please come to the podium and address the audience. Yeah, we'll hear from Cal Lake, sure. Okay, fair enough. Okay. Ryan, anything you want to add to your report?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do want to mention that we have a holiday parade coming up and city staff has a number of vehicles that will be in the parade. So we want to invite any member of city council, friends and family to join us for that event. So you can meet us right downtown at loading time if you'd like.
Very good, thank you. Anything else on staff reports? Not hearing anything. That takes us to item six, agenda changes. I would like to make a change to the agenda. I would like to move item 12A up to 7A, moving our guest speaker, the auditor to 7B.
You should get approval for that?
Yes.
Introduce a motion.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make, do I have a motion to do so?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion Baldwin, second Muncie.
In favor of voice votes.
Voice votes, fine, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Okay, motion carries. So we've made that that change to the agenda. So that will take me to item 12A, which we've moved up, which is organizational meeting discussion for committee, commission, chairperson appointments. As mayor, I have the role of nominating city officials to fill various vacancies on boards and commissions. I take this duty very seriously, and it has not been easy to make these types of decisions, but my intent is to follow the city charter and relevant state law. Over the past two weeks, I've spoken to all members of the council individually and collectively at our last workshop meeting about their board and commission assignments, along with several citizen, commission members, city staff and legal counsel. Based on this review, I am recommending the following three appointments to the council for a voice vote with terms corresponding to each elected official's current term in office or as otherwise provided in the city code. The following three appointments, the appointment of Helen Baldwin to the Parks and Public Works Committee, the appointment of Garnet Lewis to the Historic District Commission, and the continuation of the appointment of Russ Gardner to the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Stanton, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second Muncie. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, point of order, should we have not had public comment prior to beginning discussion on agenda items?
Point taken, I believe it's the mayor's prerogative to move things up if he wishes to, and so I'm doing so.
So it's item eight, so you you moved item, I think you moved item 12 A.
12A.
To 7B?
A.
Seven.
Seven.
And so 7B got shifted down, or 7A got shifted down?
Yes.
And then, then you can take public comment.
Yeah, we can, we can have public comment after, after our vote on this.
I do not believe that's acceptable, Mr. Mayor. Public comment is always taking place prior to agenda items and discussion.
Well.
That should have been part of the discussion when you took.
I had my hand raised, oh, Mr. Manager.
That's not a, that's not a vote.
It's not a vote, but it was a request to be heard.
Well, we have the beauty of having counsel on on the line, so. So Kyle, do you care to make a ruling from on the field?
Yeah, it looks like looking at your agenda and the voice vote that occurred that the commissions were moved, the commission appointments removed this item 7A, which appears to be above public comment number, number eight, so. I would say that the city council can proceed on.
I disagree. This is a. Hold on, just.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm ready, I'm ready for a voice vote on this matter. I've, we've heard from legal counsel, and there will be public comment after, after this vote. So any discussion on the appointments among the council? Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to public comment on agenda items only, please limit your comments to three minutes.
The agenda is rather vague, Catherine Simon, 428 Butler. The agenda is rather vague, obviously, relative to the topic of boards and commissions. If the council is making any changes relative to the planning commission seat held by councilperson Russ Gardner, my concerns are as follows. This would be the second time certain council members have contacted the city attorney to justify changes to various boards. The first regarding removal of Mr. Crawford from planning was summarily dismissed by the city attorney statement, no harm, no foul, literal meaning, though there was a mistake made, there is no damage. Well, this is my understanding that the council fully agreed at a workshop meeting to allow Gardner to continue as the city council representative on planning. Therefore, I would believe the intent of the council was to have Mr. Gardner fulfill his role. Why do certain persons have access to query the city attorney and others do not? Has councilperson Gardner been afforded the same access to the city attorney as his peers? You are engaging in a slippery slope whereby certain councilpersons are intimidating others to load the board with appointments that will curry favor for them or various projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone else in the, in the audience wishing to make a comment? Mr. Fox, please address. Your counsel.
Thanks for your earlier offer to speak during the staff reports. This relates. It could have been done then, but I'm, I was afraid it was a little, might be a little longer than you wanted to hear then, so whatever. I'm Dan Fox of Sagittuck. I'm the city council's representative, one of two, to the Sagittuck Township Fire Board, for those of you new and welcome. For those new council members, I use, I have traditionally, although I'd be happy to have this change, I traditionally have used my personal public comment time this period for these reports. The, because the previous council demanded that they not be part of the regular conduct of council meetings. If you want to know why, you'll have to ask the remaining members. This report highlights topics covered at the November 21st Fire Board meeting. Note that I'll not cover the fire district's monthly statistics, which you guys receive probably more information than you want, but receive in print form in your packet, I believe, or otherwise. If you have questions, however, I'll do my best to answer them. So here in rough order is what we discussed at the Fire Board meeting, the board welcomed special guests, really welcomed special guests, Dave and Joe Becken, who presented the first of five $7,400 checks from the Gerald and Jeanette Becken Foundation to the Sagittuck Township Fire Department, $7,400 a year for five years. Jerry was longtime firefighter and board member and is beloved in the department. You may see a photo of the big check being presented to a very grateful Fire Board in the coming, in a coming issue of the commercial record, that's for you, Scott, if you're on the call. The board approved expenditures of $149,958.37 for the most recent month. The following were included in Chief Janik's report to the board during fire, excuse me, during fire prevention month, 352 students, local students went through the smokehouse where they simulate a fire and the kids learn how to respond. That smokehouse is loaned to us for that purpose by the Holland Fire Department. Sagittuck Township Fire District continues its bimonthly fire prevention 25-minute lessons at Douglas Elementary School. Key topics include know your address, which may sound mildly amusing to adults, but that's the first thing the nine 11 callers or a center will ask whoever calls. So if mom or dad has fallen down the steps and it's a five-year-old or a seven-year-old, first thing then they're going to say is, what's your address? And so that's a big, that's a major piece of sort of lifelong learning at the earliest possible stage. It's terrific, and they, they have clever ways of working with the kids. So know your address, have a family meetup place designed near your house in the event of emergency so that you can account for, that everybody is there or is not there. They do a close your door thing related to avoiding smoke and flames because kids traditionally will run to their bedrooms and leave the door open so that a pet can get in or whatever. That just opens the way.
Dan, if, if you'd like to continue your report in the next public comment period, I'd welcome it, but you have exceeded your three minutes, sir.
I don't have that much to go, it's up to you.
Go ahead, please, if you could then. Just go, please, if you could wrap it up, thank you, sir.
If you could.
If you could wrap it up, Dan, please, just continue, thank you.
Okay, okay. Skip that one. Oh, the January 21st, I don't have the time unfortunately, but I can get it for you. January 21st is the fire district's awards and appreciation dinner at the Sagittuck Yacht Club, you are all cordially invited. And under new business, noting that the new fireboat 2194 is now in service, its predecessor has been transferred to the insurance company for disposal, and I think that's just about it. The last one's an inside thing, pre-alert. The county wanted, wanted fire districts to weigh in on the pre-alert policy that they're going to, they want to implement, that gets a call to the fire district early on an EMT call or an ambulance call. Traditionally, they wait to complete one and the fire district finds out somewhat later. This gives the fire districts a response time of 50% reduction, that's it, thanks for the extra time.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Please state your name for the record and your, your address.
Aaron Wilkinson, 310 North Maple Street. I just actually want to give you a little insight on the Fire Board and other board reports. Dan is actually a citizen of the city of Sagittuck, and so his public comment should be reserved for public comment. That would be if he had an issue with your plan to garn, make Garnet the Planning Commission appointee rather than Russ Gardner, which is why everyone is here. If he wanted to have an opinion on that, he's not even allowed to share an opinion. And after you, Mayor Dean, slammed your hands on the table, so upset that you don't have representation on the Fire Board, I would just like to direct you to the city charter, where it says that you have six-year appointments. Those two appointments are Dan Fox and Jane Verplank. If you want to communicate with the Fire Department, you allow them to present their report to you like every other person. When I was the clerk, Dan used to be put at the front of the agenda so that he did not have to sit through the entire meeting if he did not want to. He usually sat through the entire meeting anyway because he's a citizen and he's very interested. But Garnet, when she became mayor, put him in public comments at the end and restricted him to that, and that is why you don't know what's going on at the Fire Department, and that is why you do not have input onto what's going on at the Fire Department. And I suggest that he was a counsel. Number one, get yourselves a copy of Robert's Rules of Order, because I don't think Barry Johnson can come to every meeting to let you know all the ways you violate it. Number two, I would suggest that you read the city charter, because you are abusing your power right out the gate. If you want to be transparent, you need to fix the way you're working. This whole shenanigan that went on this week with maybe we're going to sideline Russ Gardner and we're going to get an opinion from the attorney to justify it, how much did that cost taxpayers for you to try and sidestep our charter? I'm sorry, but it's ridiculous.
Thank you, anyone else wishing to make comment?
I want to thank you for recognizing that Russ should be reinstated to his position on the Planning Commission and just emphasize that what happened in the last week caused a lot of the members of the community to lose a lot of faith in this council. It's pretty clear who was the ringleader. But the number of people that fell in line behind that person is very disappointing to the public. It was the equivalent of tar and feather for what happened to Russ this week. I'm sorry it happened, and thank you for recognizing he should remain in his position.
Thanks, sir. Any other members of the audience wishing to comment?
Yes.
We'll take Barry and then we'll do the honor.
I am not going to use my three minutes to make my report for Cal Lake, and if you want that report, it's not on the agenda. But maybe I'll use the public comment on any item to take three minutes to make mine. But a couple of things I want to bring up is while reviewing the proposed minutes of November 14th, I noticed that the minutes were incorrect. The approved 1114 minutes state that Mayor Lewis moved agenda changes. I was at that meeting and I don't recall a motion being made to approve the agenda, so I went back and watched the video. In the very first minute, you didn't, don't have to watch long, but in fact, Mayor Lewis and her words, and I heard this tonight again, I'm going to use mayor's prerogative to rearrange our agenda a bit, word for word from the meeting. There's no such thing as mayor's prerogative to change the agenda, and the council did not vote to accept the changes. It's all on the video, very problematic, bad form. Robert's Rules of Order states the chair cannot depart from the prescribed order of business, meaning the agenda, which only the assembly, or council can do by two-thirds votes, and this can quickly be achieved by approving the agenda by unanimous consent if there are no objections. Thus, the mayor did not follow the rules of order for agenda changes, and the minutes do not reflect what actually happened, but they are, that's a moot now because you approved them. And the other thing I want to take a minute, 20 seconds for is again, this fiasco that went on for the last week and you know, the Title III, Section 31.35, Item B of the Charter says, any member may be, after a public hearing, be removed by the mayor for inefficiency, neglect of duty, or malfeasance of office. The mayor made no reference to inefficiency, neglect of duty, or malfeasance in office. To justify this removal, the mayor referred to, I think, a flimsy legal opinion cooked up behind closed doors without the consent of the council to engage the city attorney to find a loophole to remove Russ. Russ's term on the Planning Commission does not expire until November 1st, 2023. Rather than invent ways to remove Russ from the Planning Commission, the ethical thing to do is to correct your oversight and vote to reaffirm Ross Gardner's term on the Planning Commission. There are two vacancies on the Planning Commission. I encourage the mayor to devote his time to properly filling those openings.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council?
Yeah.
I, we have, we've moved online now, Mr. Medler?
Yes. This is in response to item 12A that was moved to seven, and as people have indicated that the backroom deal that was cut before this change tonight was to install Garn on the Planning Commission. And so I'm just going to read the comments that I have prepared because I think they're still relevant. All of you knew that this backroom Garn Lewis conspiracy to replace Gus with Garger was wrong. In fact, it's more than wrong, it's illegal. None of you were elected to do the bidding of Garn Lewis and affect her revenge to her goals. None of you could uncover the former zoning admin, what? What the former zoning administration administrator was doing, all things too late, but somehow a manufactured scheme was uncovered from November 21, 21 to pass by Ms. Lewis. I don't know how even you have the ability to vote on this because one of you is conflicted and the rest are disqualified for participating in and taking steps to further this conspiracy. All members of city council and all city employees are hereby put on notice to preserve all of your records and the cities in whatever form pending further legal action. This is shameful. So for all of you, what are you called, Garn's potted plants? The simple resolution is for all of you to obtain Garn Lewis's resignation and prohibit her from any position or relationship with the city. Time for the city manager to manage the city. The manager should have put a stop to this before it gained any traction. Time for city council members to do the city's business. Stop being bullied by a bully that quickly plays the victim when confronted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Medler. Any additional comments from the online contingent? I see none. So I think that takes us to our guest speaker, the annual auditor's report.
Yeah.
Ken, go ahead, please, Ken's online.
Yeah, he's online, and we have the pleasure of having our treasurer here, Mr. Peter Sanistowski. So maybe he'd like to introduce Ken and give an intro.
So Ken's on, Ken's online right now, so I'm going to let Ken Berthuma, he's the lead auditor for the city, has been for, I think this is a year since 2014, so it's, I think this is the seventh or eighth fiscal year that he's been the auditor. Ken, can you hear everybody? Ken, you need to unmute yourself.
Okay, and I can hear you, and you can hear me now, right?
Correct.
Okay, and you can see me, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, good evening, everyone, members of the Sagittuck City Council, ladies and gentlemen. I am very pleased to have this opportunity to present the audited financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2022. Our audit work again this year went very smooth. We encountered no difficulties, problems, or differences. We received excellent help and cooperation from the city staff. And we report no internal control problems. And we found that the city bookkeeping was in excellent shape and ready for audit when we started. So as a result of our audit work, we issued the best possible unmodified opinion that you find on page one and two in the audited financial statements, there it is. Page one and two, right there. So there's an opinion at the top, you'll see that, it says, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above fairly present in all material respects, respect the financial position of the governmental activities in each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of City of Sagittuck as of June 30, 2022, and the respective changes in financial position for the year then ended in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles in the United States. So that's, that's our opinion with no exceptions to that. That is, as I said, it is the best possible opinion. I'd like to take a few minutes to run through the report with you, starting on page seven. Page seven is part of the management's discussion and analysis. Here we see a condensed comparative government-wide statement of activities prepared on a full accrual basis of accounting on page seven. Move it further, I think, in the report, there you are at five, going on, you're on four. There you go, now that, next page, that's six.
Yeah. There, right there.
Yeah, okay, I just want to talk a little bit about that page. That's interesting there because it has the comparative information that is helpful to see what's going on. We noted that net position increased, a bottom line net position, the change in net position was a positive $1,165,250 for the year. We saw that property tax revenues up there at, were $2668,883 compared to $2,574 the prior year, and that's up about $94,000. The tax millage rates were unchanged, but the taxable SEV did go up a little bit, which accounts for that increase there. We saw that the government, general government expenses down there, the first line under expenses were $962,000 compared to $571,000 in the prior year. The main, the main difference there, as you know, was the legal fees that the city encountered last year. And also we saw that the recreation and culture expenses came in at about $606,000 compared to $485,000 prior year. So that was an increase of about $120,000 there. Okay. Moving ahead to page 10. Here you see the statement of net position. This is a snapshot of where the city stood on June 30 in terms of assets and liabilities. There, here we see that the city in all of its funds held over $10 million in cash and investments, the top line of the assets there. The city has no unfunded pension liability. You see a net pension asset there under, on the listing of assets, approximately $289,000 net pension asset. That means that you've actually covered that liability. A few years ago, you did have a pension liability, but the city has been very proactive in that and, and taking care of that liability by paying in the appropriate amounts. Then get that fully funded. Okay. The unrestricted, unrestricted net position going, pulling down at, down under net position towards the bottom, you see, net position came, unrestricted came in at $6,772,000. That's up approximately $900,000 for the year. Then moving ahead to page 12. The here you see the balance sheets for the governmental funds. When we talk about funds, we're talking about a modified accrual method of accounting, which is, really has a focus of the, only the current available resources. Here you don't see any long-term debt or capital assets or pension asset or liability. Okay, so the balance sheet here reports a very healthy condition as of June 30, I think. The general fund, fund balance overall is stated there at approximately $5,762,000, and of which $4,616 is totally unassigned or unrestricted. Okay. So very good fund balance for general fund. Your street funds also have a nice fund balance together, local major street of approximately $2.7 million of that's money that of, that's money that can be used for the streets for maintenance or improvements. And then moving ahead to page 15. Now here you see, this is a continuation of the funds, modified accrual method of accounting. We saw that the general fund revenues last year came in at $3,307,000 approximately. Expend, expenditures of were $2,717,000 approximately. So bottom line on the general fund, you had, you had excess revenue or increase in fund balance there of approximately $582,000 for the year. Okay. And then moving ahead onto page, one more page, page 18. Just wanted to mention the Internal Service Fund, motor pool. Here, this is a statement on net position for that fund. And that, that fund as well as others is in good shape. City has approximately $757,000 in that fund invested in cash and investments. And there's no, no long-term debt for that fund. Very good shape. So in conclusion, again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to work as city auditor and I welcome your comments or questions.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions for Ken or for Peter? I'm sorry, sir, this is council deliberations with the auditor, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Peter for his hard work with the auditors as well as thank you to the auditor for the presentation this evening. Excellent work. The city remains in a good financial position. As a council member, I would appreciate when doing the audit that this was presented at a workshop so we can go a little bit more into detail on this. There's a lot of information to absorb here. And Peter does a great job explaining it when given enough time to be able to talk through it in my experience, so I would ask that when we see our next audit that we see it in a workshop prior to.
Sure, that's okay with me.
That's, that's been best practice and, and so it's a lot to absorb.
Go ahead.
I'd like to agree with what Russ said, being thrown in, right, right, right at the beginning. And I'm familiar with audits because we have them every year over at Interurban. I would have liked to known a little bit more about this last Wednesday at our workshop, so I want to agree with Russ on that.
So I've conducted many audits and I'm pleased to see the, the position that we're in and am gratified for the results.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you very much, Ken. Thank you, Peter.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey. I believe that takes us to item nine, introduction of ordinances, which we have none. Item 10, no public hearings, no unfinished business. What we have remaining on new business is item 12B, the Spear Street launch agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this agreement until we have an updated agreement with the correct dates and names. Still has the former mayor and the former city clerk on the document. So I would make a motion that we table this until we get a complete, up-to-date, correct document.
A motion from Gardner?
Second.
A second from Baldwin? Any discussion? Roll call on Councilman Gardner's motion.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis is excused. Muncy?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. We are now at item 13, public comment. This, it can be public comment at any item. So please, if anyone still has something they would like to share, please, please come forward. Catherine?
Catherine Simon, 428 Butler, I'm here this evening to apprise the council and the public of the vindictive action taken by councilperson, former mayor Garnett Lewis. Ms. Lewis falsely identified my campaign signage as violating the Michigan Campaign Finance Act by failing to include the required identification statement for yard signs. I received a complaint Saturday. Please note, compliance was met on all yard signs placed throughout the community. Disclosure is printed directly under the picture of the Maplewood Hotel. Additional disclosure sticker was placed on the lower left-hand corner. Foliage upset, obstructs the sticker on the picture Ms. Lewis submitted to the state. This deliberate harassment is particularly rich in light of the fact there is an ongoing investigation by the state police of all the candidates who ran for Sagatuck City Council. Like you, I have been interrogated relative to the signatures on my filing petitions. It is alleged there was an organized gathering of signatures without candidate identification on the petition and/or invalid certification of signatures gathered. Focus is centered on the four candidates that ran collectively. As of last week, I was informed the matter has been referred to the office of the Attorney General by the county prosecutor. No matter what evolves, this is a stain on our community. How unfortunate for Sagatuck the bar for leadership has been set so low. I really resent, it isn't enough that Jane and I lost that two weeks afterwards, we get a thing in the mail that we were messed up on our signage. So both of us have to go through the process of identifying and correcting this so there's no paper trail on our ethics or contribution to the city in the past years.
Thank you.
Sign for your, it's embedded right there on both sides, on both sides.
Sign there, we'll grab it. You, you can leave it, Catherine, thank you. Jane, please.
On November 9th, the day after the election, sitting council member Lewis filed a complaint to the State of Michigan Campaign Finance Commission falsely claiming that I did not have proper identif- identification on my campaign signs. It is right here. And council member Muncy can attest to the fact that each and every sign that I had had this on it because we collected them together and looked at every single sign. I didn't. However, all my campaign signs had proper identification. Proof of this fact has been submitted to the proper state officials. It's more than obvious this false complaint filed by council member Lewis was done so in disingenuous and retaliatory manner in a desperate to attempt to deflect attention from the election fraud investigation currently plaguing her and several other sitting council members. It's unfortunate that dirty politics and one person's continued quest for ultimate control over a community tarnished the city of Sagatuck's reputation. When the systems of checks and balances and laws that have been very thoughtfully been put in place are bypassed, the electorate, the electorate's complaint in the election process is compromised. It is yet just another example of the abuse of power and the flagrant disregard for the law that some members of this council are associated with. Maybe Garnett Lewis needs a timeout. I would suggest that she resign from this council. She is a very, very poor representative of Sagatuck. She's very, very vindictive and evil. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to make a comment? Dan, do you wish, Dan, do you wish to make a, okay.
Dan Fox, this time speaking as Dan Fox.
Okay.
Lot of, lot of fast currents flowing tonight. And I hope everybody involved is paying attention. And I sort of hate to add to that, but I'm going to. And Jim alluded to this and Catherine alluded to it. I am more than a little distressed with how easy it seems to have been to obtain the outside, city's outside legal council's opinion and endorsement in favor of, of removing Russ from the planning commission and that, that quote-unquote approval by the attorneys happened based on the absolute thinnest of procedural missteps, if indeed that, on the part of, of the prior mayor. It wouldn't be, if it was only that, we could yell at each other, I suppose. But if you go back a couple of months to the petitions that were filed with the city regarding the abuse of power by Garnett Lewis related to the appointment of Richard Crawford to the, to the removal from the planning commission, appointment of Richard on ZBA and related matters. The attorneys were consulted then too. And they weighed in saying, because the petitions asked that the individuals appointed to the, under those flawed appointments be pulled, that the people be, that the appointments be invalid, even if they were then turned around and made valid, but that that action would take place. The attorney said, "No, no, no, you don't know." That's, that was just a minor issue. It's not really covered by the charter since there are no penalties provided in the council rule that governed that council rule, which Garnett had authored and brought to the council for vote. There's no need to, to do that. So it just seems that there's a weird sort of situational bias on the part of those attorneys and I for one would like to see someone who isn't on this council and who isn't in that group of attorneys take a close look at the caliber of the advice the city is getting from its expensive, paid, outside legal counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any other takers in the audience? Barry, do you wish to?
Yeah, I agree with Russ. I'm a little confused at the, the way the agenda's set up. Number one, Cal Lake isn't on the agenda, so I really didn't have a slot. The staff reports in there, I didn't hear any staff reports from the police, the engineers, the fire, their written reports. Okay, but I was asked to come speak in person to put the Cal Lake report in. But I'm not going to use my three minutes for that. I don't think I can do it in three minutes. But I do see a lot of errors, some bad legal advice, and again, you go back to Russ, I mean, after Russ, Rich Crawford. He was removed from the planning commission despite Title III, 31.34B, which says he may be removed after a public hearing, and that did not occur. So that's what I want to do with my three minutes. But as far as a Cal Lake report, do you want me to continue and you want me to do it in 1 minute 51 seconds?
If you'd like.
That's, but that's it. That's the cutoff for staff report, right?
Well, I, I wish we had had your staff report in earlier in the agenda.
We did. We did email the, the total packet to either the clerk or Ryan.
I don't have.
So that, that's, that was available to you. If it was not passed on to you by your staff, I can't help that.
All right, we'll, we'll look at, we'll look, we'll address that and we'll look into that. Thank you.
So I'd like to see some kind of change in the order of the agenda, more like, you know, we had in the past. So if people get to talk before things go down and your commissions and your authorities have proper time to give you a full report.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you. Not, not seeing any other takers in the audience. Mr. Medler and Mr. LaChee have their hands up online.
Sorry, no.
Okay, so, okay, thank you. Mark?
Mr. Mayor, Mark LaChee, I find a lot of people don't mention where they live and who they are, which is kind of confusing for some people. They're such sticklers for procedure. Mark LaChee, 345 Grand Street. I'm going on 10 years as a resident in this community. I'm a member of the planning commission. Newest member of the planning commission, happy to be there. I've worked well with Russ Gardner. I am fine with him staying on. But primarily my comments are because I'm disgusted and ashamed of our residents doing a public lynching of Garnett Lewis. I will readily admit I am a close friend of Garnett, as are many people in this community. Many people voted for her election and reelection and for the people sitting in this audience to say that the entire community is against her is absolutely wrong. This reminds me of, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the woman's name, but this reminds me of, again, many people in this audience sat on a council and railroaded a woman off of the city council. She owned the owl shop. Railroaded her off the city council and forced her to move out of town because she was not part of the old guard. If you want to call names, names, there's an underlying thing going on here. And it's people who don't want change versus people who are open to the idea of change. And we have a majority in our city council who are looking forward. And there's a bunch of old farts who are sitting in this town saying, "No, we can't go anywhere." So I'm going to call it the way it is. And if you want to stickle for, for procedure now, look back at when some people didn't even read motions in their packets and allowed dune grass to do what they did, resulting in a lawsuit, which is spending thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars of city money. So for those people to stand up and have the audacity to say that this city council is not following some minor procedure is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else online that wishes to make a comment? With that, I'm going to.
Medler.
Oh, Medler, oh, Gary, you, you, okay, Gary.
Yeah, just, just a comment on council members and commission members who don't read packets. There are two people that are totally responsible for the almost half a million dollars the city has spent on legal fees because of the Hulley Houseboat docks. And those two people are Garn Lewis and Cindy Osmond. Garn Lewis was on the planning commission who permitted Hulley six docks when any person with any relevant knowledge of city code knew he wasn't even entitled to one dock. Had Garn Lewis read the documents, read the code and asked questions, we wouldn't be in this position at all. And then she defended and protected Cindy Osmond for all these years after event after event reported to city council members and nothing was done. So Garn is far from innocent here. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. With that, I believe we've reached the end of public comment. Catherine, you were already up making public comment, were you not? With the sign? No, I, I'm, I'm sorry, we, we, we can't have a deliberative type thing. It's public comment, so get very.
Barry Johnson, 40 years, must have been saw him at that time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. That concludes public comment correspondence. I don't see any correspondence that made it in time for the packet. I know that we've received a lot of correspondence.
Correct. Mr. Mayor, just for the people that had sent out the correspondence today, I mean, just kind of a general note. You know, city staff, we're very busy with our, 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 our daily work. And although the agenda packets don't get out weeks in advance, the expectation is not that we'd be able to get correspondence in the agenda packet. For those who did request that would be put on the record, we will put that in a future packet. All the communication has been sent out to council.
Thank you.
So thanks to the clerk and Sarah for managing that today.
Okay, thank you for that. So that takes us to item 15, boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'll start over with you, Russ, and just go around the table.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The planning commission will be meeting on Thursday, December 15th.
Very good. Thank you.
Historic District Commission meets this Thursday.
Excellent.
Still waiting for official word from M dot N E D.
Wonderful.
Kamalas?
Anything? Well, just a, no board and commission, interurban by.
Interurban, yes. Everything's going great.
Good.
Yeah, not much to report.
Great, Helen.
I'm excited to be on the new Parks and Public Works committee.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. That takes us to council comment. We'll go around the horde once again. Russ?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to read to council an email sent last night to the city manager copying the mayor. Ryan, for the benefit of all council members in which has been standard protocol when the city attorney issues a legal opinion, a written copy of the verbal opinion shared at the eleven twenty three workshop, twenty three twenty two workshop must be provided for review and discussion at the eleven twenty eight twenty two regular council meeting. If not provided, no action or discussion regarding city council representation to the planning commission should take place. My interpretation of the city charter, specifically chapter thirty, section thirty one dot thirty one, is that the city council selected me as the representative to the planning commission. Upon my election to city council, this topic was discussed at both the eleven three twenty one council workshop and at the eleven eight twenty one regular council meeting. Additionally, obviously with the actions tonight, some of that is, is no longer, those are moot points. Additionally, I have the following questions regarding the illegal opinion verbally shared with at the eleven twenty three workshop. And please be prepared to answer these questions at the eleven twenty eight council meeting one. What precipitated contacting the attorney to request the opinion when the council already has a duly selected representative?
Thank you, Russ.
That's a question.
We are in council comments. We're not in the deliberative part of the meeting.
Let me finish the email. Two, what information was provided? And specifically, what was the question the attorney was asked to answer, or what was the problem to be solved? And three, who initiated the contact with the attorney? At six seventeen, per my email this evening, I did receive a response from the city manager. Thank you. Hello, Russ. Thanks for the notice. I will review with the team and get back to you. That's Ryan H. Thank you. I would ask that we, that I and council, not just me, but the council receive answers to those questions in time for our next workshop or sooner. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Lauren?
Um, I just want to say congratulations to Helen for being on the Parks and Public Works Committee. I'm really looking forward to the work that that group is going to be a part of. And you being on that, I look forward to some Park Street representation on the other side of the river. So we do appreciate that you'll be a part of that. Garnet Lewis returning to the historic district. I took over her term and now she'll be back on the historic district. So I appreciate that she'll be a part of that. And Russ continuing the good work on the planning commission. They have a lot ahead of them coming up with the planning commission between short term rentals and, you know, just all of the things that the planning commission has as far as waterfront development. There's a ton of things and a ton of work that's going into that. You'll continue your good work on that and we appreciate all of the correspondence on your behalf. I think it does speak volumes that people within the planning commission wanted you to stay. And we appreciated hearing from all of them. And as far as Garnet Lewis, she has served well. She has been on many, many, many boards. And I believe that we should respect everything she has done for our community.
Thank you. Holly?
Um, I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I mean, this is why we're here. This is democracy. So I, I think it's important that people were, were heard. I think it's very unfortunate that this, you know, what, that you all are starting on such a contentious note. I think the last year or two, we've done a very good job putting many initiatives forward and working with quite a few people in this room. So very unfortunate. I think that things are so divisive and I really hope that we can work as a community because this is not the Sagatuck that I know. And I hope that things will calm down and we can move forward professionally.
Yeah, I have to agree a little bit with that, Holly, and I want to thank everybody for coming out. What a learning curve I had my first meeting. But you could tell that it's in action. And because of all your letters to all of us, you know, we've decided, you know, where things should be. And, and I appreciate your stance on that, Scott. I appreciate you reaching out to everybody, letting us know. And, and I'm very happy with Russ Gardner staying on the planning commission. It's, it's quite an interesting thing. I've learned a lot. And I'm, I'm digging in that charter. I've also learned some things from Robert's rules that some things I thought maybe I should have brought up, or maybe I shouldn't have. But I'm learning a lot. I'll be going to the M M L this week and, and getting to know some folks. I also have a few friends that work there at State Capitol and I'm looking forward to seeing them again. But I want to thank you, you, you know, for coming out and voicing your opinion. We obviously saw that your opinion works. And we want to work together, like Holly was saying, you know, this is peaceful Sagatuck. We have a lot of differences and, but it's all about working together to find that happy medium. Finally, don't forget this Saturday, twelve thirty P, twelve thirty P M, you're going to want to meet at the Wicks Park Gazebo there because it's the annual Christmas parade. I've been asked to be the marshal or to help gather in the troops. So I'll be there with my Christmas suit. And I'm hoping that all of our council folks, I know a few of yous are going to be there for sure and, and have fun. To me, that's the best thing about Sagatuck is when we all get together and have a great time and we find that happy medium. Thank you.
I want to echo his comments on the parade. I'm looking forward to that this Saturday. And I also want to thank everyone for my appointment to Parks and Public Works. I think that's something we can all get behind. We can all agree that those are the jewels of Sagatuck and I'm very anxious and excited to get to hard work on that committee.
Well, that takes us to Mayor's comments and I would just like to say, welcome Gregory and Helen to the council. This is your first full meeting. They can be a lot of fun, as you can tell. And it, it is fun. I have to say, I really enjoyed being with you and the gazebo to light the tree along with Russ and it almost, I think the entire staff of council, a number of staff were there for the lighting of the, of this, of the star and the gazebo and Wicks Park. It was very enjoyable. And so there are fun things that come along with being mayor. Another fun thing is according to the charter, and I'm sure Barry will help me with this if I, if I get, don't get it perfect. You know, but the mayor is, is also in charge of, you know, presiding over ceremonial duties and something to do with the purpose of military law, which I don't know, may have come in handy tonight. I'm not sure. But with, with that in mind, I am authorizing the Precision Shovel Brigade to march on Saturday and I am, I am instructing them to take all actions necessary to ensure there is good community spirit and good cheer is spread. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Second. So a motion from Gardner, second from Stanton. This is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Media adjourn.